Welcome to the July twenty-six, two thousand twenty-two, City of Broussard Council Meeting. Please silence your cell phones, and if anyone from the audience would like to make a comment on an item listed on the agenda, please turn in a blue card to our city clerk. Each speaker will be given a maximum of five minutes. Please rise for the pledge.
It's July, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, on my nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty of justice.
Councilman Paganbacher, would you lead us in prayer?
Yes, sir. We, the members of the Broussard City Council, beg of thee, Almighty God, to enlighten our minds, so that our work will be just and fair in all things. Give us the courage and strength to fulfill our duties according to the laws of the land, and fulfilling also the holy will on earth and in heaven through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Item two point one, acceptance of the minutes of the July twelfth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Do we have a motion to accept?
I move.
I second.
The minutes were supplied to the council in their packet. Tina, do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
Any council discussion?
Question. District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
At large?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item three point one, approval of the May twenty- of the May two thousand twenty-two financial report. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
Our presenter tonight is our CFO, Karen Fontenot.
Good evening, everyone. Your May financials are in your packets. They were emailed out last week. Previously, we had addressed departmental overages, just a lot of it due to inflation. I didn't really run those figures. Those numbers have kind of been corrected with the budget we adopted last month. We're a little late getting the May financials approved just because of the whole budget process. I will report that our most recent sales tax figures, your May month was nineteen percent higher than the same month last year. It was thirty-five percent higher than the year before. Those numbers are also six percent higher than the amount we needed to meet our amended budget. So I think by the end of the year, we will have exceeded even what we projected in our final sales tax figures. May was quiet, not of all that else going on, but does anyone have any questions about any of the financials?
I was just glancing at your report, and I saw we have St. Union's Parks, Parks operating revenues are quite high this month. I believe that's due to sponsorships, but what we budgeted for sponsorship is still lagging behind.
You're on page fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay. The the month to date is higher. Our sponsorships are structured to where a lot of times they, most of the companies will pay once a year. A lot of them tend to pay in this last quarter, so May and June, we do have a lot coming in. The actual activity was about fifty-six thousand dollars, which in May, March through June, we ran about fifty to fifty-five thousand, so the actual park activity revenue was on point. But the majority of our sponsorships are collected in May and June. So they, I think we actually did finish, we got some new ones that came in in June that we didn't have before, so we're actually going to finish ahead of what we projected to finish for June sponsorships.
Tina, do we have public comment?
Question.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four point one, a report from Mike Micho with the Picard Group. Welcome, Mr. Micho.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, and we wanted to say hello from the Picard Group, myself and David Cook, that primarily worked with you in the City of Broussard. We've had the privilege of representing Broussard for the past five or six years now, and our primarily, primary goal is to secure funding from the legislature. We've been successful at securing money for South Bernard Road, the Highway eighty-nine improvements, and also just this past session, four point two million dollars coming from the state for the waterline relocation. Mayor, you know, we have a monthly call with you. I think our call is set for tomorrow, and we have a monthly check-in. Whenever you come to Baton Rouge, we introduce you to the stakeholders, and we've been very privileged, as you all know this term, that we have a number of legislative leaders who are in key positions that can help Broussard. Stuart Bishop is chairman of the Ways and Means Committee. Jean-Paul Cusson from Lafayette is chairman of House Natural Resources. Bob Henskins is chairman of Senate Natural Resources. We have members of the Finance Committee, but most importantly, we're extremely privileged that we have the Senate President, who happens to be the senator that represents Broussard. And I can tell you, when you go around the Capitol and you work the legislature, when you drop Paige Cortez's name, it means a lot. And whenever we ask for anything for Broussard, there's no questions asked. He's always says, whatever they need, let me know. And as you know, Mayor, we've had some meetings and some things we've needed to work out, and Paige has always been there. This doesn't happen very often. I think the last time Alan Barrez was our Senate President from Lafayette, but the stars are really aligned for Broussard and for Acadiana with this legislative leadership. Paige is going to give us a report on kind of what he has going on, but I just want y'all to know that he has been a champion for Broussard, and he's finishing up his sixteen years in the legislature, four years in the House and twelve in the Senate, but he's going out as Senate President, so that means a lot, and we should all be proud of the job that he's doing. So without any further ado, let me bring him up here and let him say a few words. Senate President Paige Cortez.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the council members. Thank you for your service, first of all, because it's not easy, and as I tell people, nobody wants these jobs. But I'm just talking earlier, apparently in Broussard, people do want the job because it looks like everybody's got opposition. In the legislature, not so much. You find that people go unopposed a lot more because it does take a lot of time out of your life and out of your work back on. But you know, Mike mentioned this in two thousand seven, and I have never forgotten this. My district was Youngsville, Broussard, and South Lafayette, you know, the city, the south part of Lafayette. And when we had our, our end of campaign party, it was right here at Nash's in Broussard. And the reason why is because every member of the city council and the mayor at the time, David and Kenny were both on it. And Ray, I'm not sure if you were there yet, but you were close behind if you weren't there, you know, signed and endorsed me along with the mayor at the time. And I won Broussard overwhelmingly, and I never forgot that when we were doing the, you know, the tabulating the votes on election night, when it got through with Broussard, everybody said, well, it's over. And I said, well, Broussard doesn't make up that big, you know, chunk of population, but it was important to win here. And of course, it ended up being successful that night. Never forgot that, that Broussard was there first. And so a few years later, we went through redistricting, and former mayor Charlie Longland, they got real upset when we had to cut the district in half. And I said, well, Charlie, y'all are growing, and when you grow, it's a one man, one vote, you gotta shrink your district. And I said, the only way we could shrink it was we had to give the bottom half of the parish to another district. He said, I don't like being split up. I want to have influence. But it turned out the guy who got elected with eight thousand people from Broussard was the Speaker of the House, Taylor Barrow. That worked out pretty good for Broussard. Then fast forward, Stuart Bishop took my seat, and he's represented Broussard. And so as Mike said, you know, we've had a lot of leadership positions that have represented Broussard. So it's been, it's, Broussard has fared well. I want to talk about a couple of things. Let's talk about money first, and then I'll talk about redistricting, because Kenny asked me a little bit about the redistricting. But money first, right now, it just was led, a little over a two-hundred-million-dollar project, and I know you're aware of it. We talked about the waterline. I know I talked to the mayor, and he discussed with you all the four billion dollars that was needed to realign the waterline. We ended up putting that in the budget for DOTD this session, so you no longer need to be party to that. They're going to be able to relocate that. But you're going to have a beautiful interchange right there. The sixty-million-dollar interchange that we got a few years ago, that was finally completed right through here at Morgan, was another piece of that I forty-nine south construction. We want to eventually have limited access interstate from I ten all the way, you know, to the West Bank of New Orleans. I did pass a bill this past session that allows for part of the motor vehicle sales tax to be dedicated to mega projects, four particular mega projects, I forty-nine south, I forty-nine north, the Lake Charles Bridge, and Baton Rouge Bridge. We had some federal dollars that came in, and so we were able to plug in two-hundred-million dollars in cash into the I forty-nine south project. But effectively, we're going to get forty million dollars a year from vehicle sales tax, state tax portion of the vehicle sales tax, to dedicate, and it's going to be bonded. So as I told the people with the one Acadiana a few weeks ago, for most of you here, it's going to be built in your lifetime. For some of the older guys here, maybe, maybe we won't see it, but maybe you'll drive us down there if we're old enough and can't drive. But we're going to start a few projects down towards the I ten, and there's a fifty-million-dollar project that's getting started over there. When Mike and I were, were first elected, I remember the price tag was seven-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars to do the connector. That's the portion from I ten to the Lafayette Regional Airport. Now I'm told it's probably double, it's probably one-point-five billion dollars. That doesn't count the sixty-million-dollar project right here and the two-hundred-million-dollar project right there. So effectively, just to get from I ten to South Lafayette Parish, it's going to be about a two-billion-dollar project. The good news is the wheels are turning, and the law is in place to bond out the money and get it moving quicker. So I tell people all the time, if you live in Broussard, you want to come to the state capital, and you're going to take Highway ninety, you got to go through some twenty-six or twenty-eight red lights before you get to I ten. And once we fix that and get limited access and we have an interstate, then those people that are getting clogged up at the Baton Rouge Bridge, if they're going to New Orleans, they will detour south and take I forty-nine, and you will relieve the Baton Rouge Bridge, which will solve part of that problem. So that's, that's the big, there were a lot of other, obviously, a lot of other issues we did, dealt with with money, but specifically to Broussard, Mike already mentioned them, and I know, you know, Walter and Ray do a good job of keeping us involved with the Division of Administration, making sure that dollars get, the cooperative endeavors get signed. And anything y'all need with that, with regards to that, my office can help. To touch a little bit on redistricting, so ten years later, we grew again. So my Senate seat, each Senate seat is about a hundred-and-twenty thousand people. Each House seat is roughly forty-five thousand. So what was effectively my House seat was from the river all the way to the parish line. So it had all of Youngsville and all of Broussard, didn't quite go all the way to Milton. But when Stuart took over after redistricting, as you all know, he had less of South Broussard. He did have Broussard, but he didn't have the southern part that went to the district down there. So this House district will get squeezed again. So what does that mean? That means Bo Boye, who's currently your rep from Iberia, is going to actually have more Broussard. So roughly thirty thousand people will be from Iberia Parish in his district, and fifteen thousand will be from Lafayette Parish, mostly the Broussard area. On the Senate side, so Lafayette picked up effectively one influence House district. The House district that is south of Youngsville will pick up about seventeen thousand people in the Youngsville area. Now that's based on the census. Of course, you all know, every day that census is no longer good because people are moving into those houses every day. So the voting block will be much greater, both here in Broussard and in Youngsville in the next election, because y'all are basically, if you get them, if they get on the voter rolls, they're going to be able to vote in this district. The Senate seat, you all know historically, and Mike and I were talking about this on the way over here, Lafayette didn't really have a senator until the nineteen-sixties. St. Martin and Iberia Parish were the senators for Lafayette Parish. Until Sonny Muton got elected in nineteen sixty-six, there wasn't a senator that lived in Lafayette Parish. They either lived in St. Martin or Iberia Parish, and they represented Lafayette Parish. Later, Alan Barrez, and then eventually through, you know, Max Jordan, Mike, and myself, we were the only Senate district that lived in Lafayette. So we had other districts that took part of our population, but no one lived in Lafayette. Our district was wholly included inside the parish. The parish now has two-hundred, roughly two-hundred-and-fifty thousand people. Senate district, as I said, has a hundred-and-twenty thousand people in it. My district still is one-hundred percent in Lafayette Parish. Gerald Boudreau's district is roughly fifty-something percent Lafayette Parish. He's got a little bit of St. Martin, a little bit of St. Landry. And, and so Bob Henskins' district, Vermillion Parish, seat is primarily Vermillion and Acadia, but he picks up about twenty thousand people in the Scott area. Here's what happened in this, and so Freddie Mills, you all know Freddie, had two precincts here in Broussard. We made him an honorary Broussard Senator because of his two very wealthy precincts down there. That district now will have roughly, it's again, a hundred-and-twenty thousand. It'll roughly have forty thousand or forty-five thousand people from Iberia, thirty-five thousand people from St. Martin, and twenty-five thousand from Lafayette. So Lafayette has a much greater influence now in four Senate districts, Lafayette Parish I'm talking about. So the redistricting, Kenny touched on your question you asked me earlier before the meeting. He asked me, what's happening with these lawsuits? And are these Senate districts and House districts set in the congressional district? The, after the laws were passed, the governor vetoed the congressional districts. The Senate and the House overrode the governor's veto, and it became law. But then there were laws that had been, I mean, excuse me, lawsuits that had been filed, not only for the congressional, but for the Senate and House plans. They are going through the courts. The congressional plan has been stayed by the United States Supreme Court. It's very similar to an Alabama case, and they said, until they hear the Alabama case, they're not going to take our case up, and they won't give a verdict till next July. And so what effectively happens, the congressman from Louisiana will run under the maps we drew. And then next year, if they take it up in court and lose, then we would have to redraw maps. The Senate and House districts, as you know, we don't run till next fall in twenty-three. And so we haven't gone to court. I've done some depositions, but we haven't gone to court yet. But as of now, the Senate plan and the House plan that I just spoke about are in place. So with that, I'm, once again, just very happy to be able to represent the City of Broussard and Lafayette Parish, and I want to thank you all again for your, your public service, because I know it's not easy to, to get up and serve. And I know that Ray Gary's on his way back from, from working out of, out of the parish. And so it's very difficult to sometimes just even get to the meeting. So with that, I'll take any questions if you have, Mayor. If not, just again, thank you very much.
I'd just say, I would like to say this, Senator, thank you for the relationship and what you've done to help our city and achieve a lot of the funding that we've needed to grow in ways that benefit our city. The investment that the state's making in the Ambassador Caffrey Overpass that you mentioned is much appreciated. It's, it's really, it's the next level for Broussard to have these improvements to I forty-nine. Broussard has always been a city that relied on transportation as its economic engine from the old Spanish Trail to the railroad to Highway ninety and now into I forty-nine. It's just sort of traveling that same path for our economic future. So we appreciate that. You've done, you've always been willing to meet with me and to work with us on the projects we need. And I extend that, that thanks to Mike and David. They facilitate those meetings and help us stay in tune with what's going on and what the opportunities are. So I certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
So one other thing I'll mention, thank you, Mayor, I mentioned the four mega projects. We also took a hundred-and-fifty million dollars and put it in a third, a fifth bucket, and we called it preservation dollars. So by example, this is a state highway that runs right through here. Now, I know we've done the, the road swap, but preservation is overlays. So if you have state highways, we've already gotten you the money for Highway eighty-nine, and we've gotten you the money for one eighty-two, but if you have overlays that are running through here, I mean, state highways, and you need an overlay, we can go, you know, visit with the Secretary of Department of Transportation and put that on his list for that a hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar bucket of money to do overlays, so.
We'll look into that quickly. Thank you.
All right. You know, if you don't know, you can't ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four point two, Lafayette Parish Councilman Josh Carlson with the parish report. Welcome, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council. I too have the privilege of representing the City of Broussard, you know, here on the Lafayette Parish Council. And I just wanted to come and give an update on a few items that we've been talking about, some of them for a few years, but a few things that the mayor and I have really been pushing for. And so happy to report that coming up on our next agenda, our next council meeting, which will be August second, we will, we have up for final adoption an IGA, both the Parish Council, City Council, and the City of Broussard for the repaving and reconstruction of La Nuvial Road. So I know that's something that, you know, Walter, I think it's submitted to me within six months of coming into office, and I'm glad to actually see it finally moving forward. And so that looks like all the agreements will be in place, and we'll be ready to actually start with the reconstruction of that road. I know we've got some large subdivisions being built right off that road and a lot of current subdivisions off that road, so that's certainly going to help as one of the major arteries connecting Broussard and Youngsville. And then also, at our previous meeting about two weeks ago, we allocated about five-hundred-thousand dollars from Parish ARPA money towards the replacement of the Garber Road Bridge. I had approached the, the mayor, I don't know, six months ago or so, and we, I said, look, I want to find some projects that we can partner with the City of Broussard, the City of Youngsville, and maybe stretch those dollars and help them go further, not just a project that you guys are doing, not just a project that we're doing, but how can we come together and use those dollars together? And so we passed that. That has been approved, and so that money is, is there, ready to go whenever engineering's complete. And I know it might be a little bit more than what we had first anticipated, so let me know if we need to go back and revisit that. But we've always enjoyed, I think, a great working relationship with the mayor and the councils, and so wanted to come and give an update on those two main projects and say that if there's any others, please let me know. As the Senator said, if you don't know, you can't ask, and so if I don't know what's needed here, I certainly can ask and go and advocate for that. And, you know, we talk pretty regularly, but I wanted to give an update on that and then ask if there were any questions or any other projects that you guys had that you wanted to prioritize. And I know between the state parish, the City of Broussard, you certainly have advocates there working to bring some of those tax dollars back to, to the local community and making sure those projects get done. So with that, I'll turn it over. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Josh, I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Sure.
Yeah, I think you and I spoke about the litigation that was going on between St. Martin and Lafayette.
Correct.
As I understand it, regardless of the spoils that were extracted, you know, that, that area ultimately affects Broussard drainage. That's where our water goes.
Yes.
Has that been taken care of? I mean, ultimately, that'll affect us down the road. Is that?
So I, I mean, I can't speak to where we are in the litigation process. I have not heard, other than the lawsuit filed by St. Martin Parish against Lafayette Parish recently.
Right.
Prior to that, all the numbers that I had seen showed substantial benefit to all of Lafayette Parish and no harm done to St. Martin Parish. Now, I know there are some questions, if not, some, some questions there, but every engineering study that I saw showed no harm, because at the end of the day, we want to improve drainage here, but not at the expense of our neighbors. And so, you know, I, I certainly hope that, you know, my belief is that that is accurate, and, but I know the process is going to have to play out in court between St. Martin Parish and Army Corps of Engineers.
Were the spoils removed? Do you know?
The spoils were removed.
Okay.
They were. So just to give context, whenever the Vermillion River was dredged in the fifties, the spoil bank, the spoil removed from the river was set on the east side of the river, and it was always set, it was supposed to be set on the west side of the west bank, because St. Martin Parish and Cypress Island Swamp, Lake Martin Road, that area is a naturally low-lying area and retention area, and what are should, as the banks overflow on the Vermillion River, flow into that area. It's, it's ten million cubic, I'm sorry, ten million acre feet of water. It's a large amount of water, bigger than any detention pond we can build. And I think it was just a mistake, and they placed it there, and that was seventy years ago. In the, in the nineties, the Army Corps said, while we can't go in and actually do the work, we believe that this should have, these spoil banks never should have been there. And that kind of is what started the process of Lafayette Parish looking at that as a potential project. Yes, sir.
Councilman, if I could ask you to continue the push that you have helped us with on continuing to clean Cooley de Poche to the Vermillion River. That's one project we haven't completed yet.
I will, so that is, there's funding there. It's on our scheduled projects for this fiscal year, which we're about to start. And so this fall, we should be seeing movement on that second portion of Cooley de Poche, which is from where we left off. That first phase was done, the remainder of the way down to the Vermillion River. So it is there, and I'll continue to push for that. That should be completed this year.
The two projects you did mention are vitally important to Broussard. We appreciate that cooperation from you and the entire council. La Nuvial is much needed, that reconstruction of the road. And the bridge that you mentioned on Garber Road is the worst bridge we have in Broussard as, by rating. So it's very important that we get that, that, that bridge fixed as soon as we can.
Oh, absolutely. I will say this too, you know, it's not just myself. Tonight, we have Councilman Brian Tabor, who represents District One, Karen Crow, North Lafayette area. I invited him to come really because of the council. We want to work together, not just for our own individual districts, but he wanted to come and hear what was happening in Broussard, because he fully supports these projects. And we're always working together to say, how can we work in partnership with all of the municipalities within Lafayette Parish? So certainly want to thank him for being here tonight as well. Thank you, guys.
Item four point three, Mr. Tom Holloman with Tricom Real Estate, various requests for cell tower on Albertson's Parkway. This item, I talked to Mr. Tom today. Mr. Tom has withdrawn this item from the council agenda to be placed on a future council agenda. There was, the reasoning basically is there, there has been a challenge by another cell tower company, and there, there is some technical data that they were not able to provide to us in time for the meeting. So after speaking with our legal department, there is an agreement that we would set a public hearing for this item on August eleventh, which would come to our zoning and planning meeting, and then we would attempt, and I'm confident we can do it, to set it back on the council's agenda for August twenty-third. And all the information and notices that need to be done, we feel like can be done in that timeline. Oscar, if you'd like to make a comment. Okay, so we are in agreement there. So Mr. Holloman has withdrawn the item, so there's no council action tonight on that item, but it will be returning to the council in the near future. Item five point one, resolution number seven-two-one-dash-two-two. A resolution declaring the contract for South Bernard Road Fairfield Road Extension Phase Two project to be substantially complete. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Daniel Hutchinson with Como Engineering is our presenter tonight. Welcome, Daniel.
Good evening. This is the, the space two of South Bernard Road, which is from Albertson's Parkway to Main Street with intersection improvements at Main Street. And we did intersection improvements at Albertson's Parkway, once we put the signal up there. Mel and I performed, and the contractor performed a final inspection on it. It's substantially complete. They have a few little punchless items. They have to dress up at both intersections, and, but most of the items have already been addressed.
So your recommendation to the council is that they approve a substantial complete to wrap up the, the end of the project?
Yes, sir.
Tina, do we have public comment?
No public comment.
A council discussion or questions for Daniel?
Daniel, just to confirm, the lights installed by Slimco are not part of this contract, correct?
No, sir.
Okay, so that's going to be sole and certain.
That's totally different.
Question?
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 5.2, resolution number 722-22. A resolution declaring the contract for the 2021 street overlay project to be substantially complete. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move. Second.
Our presenter tonight is again Mr. Daniel Hutchinson with Como Engineering.
This was the street overlay project we did, which was Cypress Meadows, Island Oaks, Waterford Ridge. It was a patching and overlay, so we patched the failures and overlaid the roads. And then we also change ordered in the section from the railroad tracks to Albertson's Parkway to Mel and Overlay. And Mel and I did a final inspection on it. They've addressed all their items and were recommending substantial completion.
Tina, do you have public comment?
No public comments.
Council discussion or questions for Daniel?
Question.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
At Large?
Yay.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 5.3, resolution number 723-22. A resolution approving the Louisiana Systems Compliance Questionnaire for the period covering July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move. I'll second.
Our presenter tonight is our CFO, Karen Fontenot.
So at the end of each fiscal year, we complete the Louisiana Systems Compliance Questionnaire. It is completed and unsigned in your packets. We're basically saying that we have complied with public bid laws, code of ethics, budget laws, audit and financial reporting, open meetings, asset and debt management, and fiscal agency and cash management. So upon your approval, this gets signed by the mayor, by the city clerk, and myself, and this gets turned over to our auditors. So we're required to turn this over every year to them. Does anyone have any questions about the form itself?
Tina, do you have public comment?
No public comments.
Council discussion?
Question.
District 5?
Yes.
At Large?
Yay.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance number, ordinances for introduction. Item 6.1, ordinance number 22-737. An ordinance of the city council authorizing an exchange of property with Clifton Shepherd. Do we have a motion to introduce?
I move.
In the packet, there is a map showing the land in question. I'm going to ask Walter to weigh in on this one because some of it's a little bit technical. Walter, if you don't mind giving a clear understanding to the council of what's involved with this exchange?
Sometime ago, Dr. Shepherd approached the city, and we, right where the new gateway sign is, we owned a track that, besides the gateway sign, was kind of awkward to work with. He wanted, he wanted the remainder of that right around the gateway sign. The city's going to keep the gateway sign, but the property right around it, which gives him a little cleaner corner there. And in exchange, if you look in the upper left, you'll see a shaded area. He's proposing to trade, do an even trade acre for acre. And so what the city, where it gets complicated is the city is, would be swapping the remainder of the property at that intersection for the piece of property in the upper left, along with, if you see right here, it's like a little dimple in the road. That's for a large J-turn. And then we're also asking him to give us bigger easements so that we can eventually put multi-use path. So we got, we're getting a bunch of little pieces. And what we did was, when we did the survey, we calculated to, you know, three one thousandths of an acre equal swap.
So just to frame it a little differently, the city was in a position where we had to approach Dr. Shepherd, who owns all the land that you're already looking at around what the city owns on this map. We needed a right of way or some sort of way to acquire some of the land for the on-the-road frontage for a multi-use path to travel up South Bernard Road, easements for that and along Main, as well as the J-turn.
Correct.
Once we approached Dr. Shepherd, he is, he came back to us saying, I'd like to do a little more. I'd like to clean up my piece of property. Are you using this property you have next to the gateway sign? Currently, we have no plans to use that, to move it, to give us a piece of land which appears right by the large oak tree with the bridge on it, right next to Village of Broussard, that area. This swap would put the land that we have behind the gateway sign back into commerce because he's planning to develop that land. So, you know, this is the first introduction to bring to the council for discussion, to start talking about it. But there are some pieces of land here that we need from Dr. Shepherd, whether we buy it from him or we do some sort of swap with him. He has made a request to bring that a little further and, you know, at his request to swap some land he feels is not as useful to him as in, with a piece that he thinks is more useful to him.
Right. And so the city ends up with that little rectangular piece by the big oak tree. I believe it's about a two, a little over two acres, nice, clean rectangular that we could, it could be a parking lot, a little park or something. So we end up with, we end up with a pretty clean piece of property that we can do a lot of things with down the line.
I don't believe Dr. Shep, here tonight, or anyone representing him to speak on his behalf, but we will do our best to answer council questions, or if there is public comment.
No public comments.
Question.
Question.
At Large? District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That is the last item on our agenda tonight. Thank you all for being here. Please drive carefully. Meeting adjourned.